Okay, we're going. All right.
All right, I will call to order this meeting of the Town of Maynard Planning Board, October, August 11th, 2020 at 7:02 PM. This is Andrew DeMore, Vice Chair, standing in for Greg DiZolo, who cannot join us this evening. We have four members of the board on, Andrew, Jim, I guess it's not just audio anymore, everyone can see this, right? So you don't need to do the play-by-play. So I think first item up on the agenda, approval of minutes, we'll postpone that to the end as is typical. We'll just say, okay, Mill and Main, what do we need to actually do? That's been withdrawn.
Well, we did not, Mill and Main was in for a determination of major or minor modification. So it wasn't a hearing, it was just simply a determination for the board. And as of today, I received word that they are no longer pursuing the truck option. So there's no vote or anything like that, it's just.
We just note that it's withdrawn and.
Yes, it was just for the minutes, right, yeah.
Okay, well.
And the second change is, I anticipated we would be taking a vote whether or not to recommend approval for adoption of Keene Avenue at this year's town, at this fall's town meeting. They're missing one piece and I will anticipate they'll have that and be back in two weeks. But that is just simply to recommend to the town meeting to accept it or not to, but.
They're crossing a T's and they're closing out process.
Right, oh wait, I just received, Chris, all right, Chris has just emailed me and he is not able to make it tonight.
Well then, we'll continue as we were.
He says, okay.
I don't think we have anything up for a supermajority, right, so it's.
Uh, well, yeah, we do, we do.
Oh, so there are things we cannot vote on?
No, you can vote on them, we just have to make sure that.
Oh, unanimous.
Have unanimous, right. Yeah, we, let's see, we have the special permit would be.
But all the troublemaking board members are on, so who knows?
Let's hope not. Um, so that is what I have so far, so if, are you ready and I'll bring.
Yeah, let's, let's move on to Coolidge.
And for the record, Andrew, you did, you have Mullen in?
I have Mullen.
Okay, so I have that and I have it set up, so you're good and. Oh, Taylor, I will turn it over to you where we left, where we left off the other two weeks ago.
Okay, great, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to share the screen. I've made an updated presentation because I think we covered many of those items before, but just correct me as I go through it, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
First of all, my name is Taylor Bearden again, just for purposes of the record, I represent Civicco and we are the applicant for 12 Bancroft Street. We're in front of the Town of Maynard Planning Board for a special permit for multifamily use, as well as a number of items, site plan review and a number of waivers. Now, this is a continuance of our July 28 submission package and it is my understanding, but please correct me if I'm wrong, that since we previously covered the entirety of the request for special permit, site plan review and waivers, that I won't need to go over that again? Can you please confirm?
That is correct.
Thank you. So some updates since our last communication, just for the benefit of all parties to this call. So we did make a subsequent response to the VHB comment letter, that was from August 3rd. Those changes were an amendment to the snow storage area, adding of a detail for sidewalk depth, changing the location of a handicap ramp, as well as spot grade changes and some additional fence detailing. So the site plan was updated accordingly and all changes were integrated and.
Oh, excuse me, Taylor, everything is up, all the latest is all up on Board Docs, so anybody can go right to it.
Perfect, thank you, Bill. Lastly, we did make some changes to the site lighting plan, where we reduced the fixture count by three. I just wanted to call that out since I didn't think anyone would notice. There are two known inconsistencies that I wanted to bring to the attention of the board, just so you don't think I'm trying to squeeze them by you. The landscape plan is not updated based on the VHB feedback, just based on some vacation scheduling and such. But basically, all that means is the underlying file is going to be a little bit different, but it shouldn't materially change the landscape plan. And then we have been debating a movement of the condensers based on some feedback from the HVAC engineer. But again, just wanted to bring that up so everyone was on the same page. So my goal at this point is to essentially let the board drive the questioning. And we have Paul from Stamsky McNary, as well as Kathleen and Sean from Sustainable Comfort, all three of whom have been integral in preparing the material that's in front of the board. So I would appreciate if we could turn this more into a dialogue at this point. And we're happy to drive accordingly, but I assume that the board has some questions and feedback for us at this point.
Great, thank you very much, Dylan. First, I'll ask Wayne, just since we're dealing with VHB comments and responses, you're satisfied with everything that the developer and the applicant has provided?
Yeah, yes, Andrew, thank you for asking. The applicant provided a letter dated August 7th, I reviewed that, the applicant and their engineer, rather, I reviewed that. There's several places through there, I think it would be important to note that VHB noted that we support their waiver requests, we can go through these one at a time if needed. We talk about the parking a little bit, we defer to the planning board, but we do support what's currently proposed. And really, the only other thing that is of note is that we do recommend a condition be added, that DPW sign-off be received relative to water and sewer connections prior to the issuance of any building permits, not, just to be crystal clear, not prior to approval by this board, but prior to issuance of any building permits, correct?
Gotcha, okay. So to my understanding, and you know, I think that the, where many of these issues, you know, look satisfactorily addressed, the outstanding issue seems to be, if it is an issue, but the outstanding item that needs to be discussed, and I believe our colleagues from ZBA have joined for this, is, I think, around the parking waiver. But let me ask the other members of the board if they have any questions or, you know, sort of overriding concerns that you think we need to address with this project this evening?
Yeah, this is Bill, I'm curious about what complete streets enhancements are included in this project. I assume the sidewalks are being redone around the perimeter, but I'm not clear where that is in the documents.
Bill, this is Taylor Bearden speaking. Kathleen or Paul, if I brought this up on screen and showed the proposed site plan, could one of you walk Bill Crancha through his question?
Yes.
Okay, tell me where to go, I'll be your.
Sheet three, I think, is best. So, Bill, VHB advised us to do this and we also spoke with Bill Nemser and Katie at a meeting a few weeks back about it, but we are going to be rebuilding the sidewalk on Bancroft Street. It's really not in great condition right now, it's a concrete sidewalk, but it's essentially flush with Bancroft Street, there's no curb reveal, there's really nothing dividing the vehicle travel away from the sidewalk. So we are going to be replacing that. The sidewalk in Elmwood is in pretty good condition, so we aren't proposing to rebuild that at this time. But it's really, the one on Bancroft Street really could use it, so that is part of this application.
Is there any detail showing like the width or the type of curb or things like that?
Yep, yeah, top right, I think it is Taylor, yep, you got it. So this was Wayne's suggestion, it's a monolithic concrete pore, so it's all pouring in place. So as you can see, the curb sort of just connects to the sidewalk, it's all one big slab of concrete. Minimum four inch reveal and that's just so that we're not changing the grade too much just because it's such a tight spot and we don't want to totally change the appearance of the frontage of this property by building some monstrous sidewalk. Four feet wide, that's really what it is right now, so we're trying to match what's there while making it better.
Okay, my last question is, is that work part of the, what is it, $100,000 allowance you have for off-site improvements? Or is that separate?
So to my understanding, and I would welcome anyone to step in if their understanding is different, just because this is sort of a complicated issue. I do not think the work on the frontage of the property that we will own is part of that $100,000 allowance, however, work associated with the property that we will not own, which means frontage on a little bit of Bancroft and Elmwood, if there were any, would be part of that allowance. Or reduced from that allowance.
Oh, so you're talking like the sidewalks and the ramps touching the public parking lot?
Yeah, I don't know a better way to delineate other than work performed on our property versus work performed on public property. Is that consistent with everyone else's understanding? I don't know if there's a member of the Coolidge School Working Group on the, on the call at the moment.
Taylor, this is Lyndee, that is correct. Lyndee Gere.
Thanks, Lyndee.
Okay, thanks. Are there members of the board, questions and concerns? I concur, I think this is accurate and we're really pretty good place with this in general. Bill, is everyone that you wanted, have all our colleagues from the ZBA joined that we're going to?
Um, I don't know who's on here, I know they had to jump off, I know there was a short period. Leslie, are you still on here? Oh yeah, there's Leslie, Leslie, you're muted, Leslie, but if you would like to speak, Leslie is a longtime member of the zoning board, I don't know if she has.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, so I was just wondering, and maybe this was covered at the last meeting, will any of the parking area, will that be redone with new surface and will the surface be permeable?
So I may be the best person to answer that question. You're talking about all the parking as a whole and how it compares to the existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so it's gonna be, it's in the same spot, but it is a totally new parking lot, new pavement. It's not going to be pervious, but we do have catch basins in each of these parking areas and subsurface chambers to infiltrate and treat stormwater, so it will be an improvement over the existing condition where there are no drains controlled. And on top of separating the private and the, and the public lot, one of the reasons that we, we must totally replace what's there is just to grade it properly to adhere to the zoning requirements.
Okay, so I don't know, yeah, it's not deemed important to make it permeable for.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Permeable pavement requires a certain level of maintenance that is extremely high. On behalf of the town, I would not prefer permeable pavement on the lot that will be on the town property. If the applicant wishes to pursue that on their own, they could. It is more expensive, it does require a lot of maintenance and if it's not maintained, it doesn't work appropriately. I think that the system, the underground drainage and infiltration system that the applicant is proposing is effective. It'll treat the stormwater and it will infiltrate it underground in lieu of runoff overland. So I think it's an appropriate system for this type of lot versus permeable pavement.
Leslie, this is Taylor Bearden, just on behalf of the applicant, I'll echo a couple of those points. So number one, it won't be cost feasible for us to go impermeable, or sorry, permeable. Although we agree conceptually, I mean, I think virtually under any circumstance, I would, I would prefer that we don't cover the earth with impermeable surface. But in this particular case, looking at the site plan as a whole and the relationship to the greater park, the effort that we did make to reduce impermeable surface was just trying to reduce, to the minimum extent possible, the addition of, you know, walkways and additional hard surfaces so that we were basically not trying to change existing conditions significantly. But it's, we simply won't be able to afford to do that based on the scope of the project.
Okay, so, um, I would say that, you know, the, the fact that there isn't sufficient parking to meet the zoning regulations, but it sounded as though people who are going to rent these units, it would be understood in their contract that that's, that's what they get and and that, you know, this shouldn't be considered precedent-setting because this is a historic building and it's kind of a one-off that we're doing this. And I'm pleased and, you know, I'm pleased that this is, that this project is going forward. I hope it's going forward. So I just, I don't know how it will be, you know, put forth that this is not, just because we're granting, we might grant this, it wouldn't be something that somebody should then point to and say, well, you gave it to them, we should have the same.
None of our decisions create precedence. Each project is a delicate balance of its own sort of weights, needs and responses to the situation. We're not beholden by that in any way, Leslie. Were those the main points from the ZBA?
Well, for me.
Anyone else?
I think that the issue of parking, I.
We'll address it in detail, I just wanted to see if anyone else was, had any other points they wanted to raise. We kind of, because I think, I feel like that to me is sort of the bow that needs to be tied on this. So I wanted to make sure there was nothing else we needed to address prior. And anyone from the public here to comment? Okay, so, you know, one of the things that stressed to me was, you know, we need to be clear about the requested waiver for the parking and to make sure that we are, you know, sort of clearly laying this out because it will be conditional on waivers granted by the ZBA. So, you know, I personally, and this is sort of informal, I personally have no problem with the reduced parking limits. Can I just get a sort of nod or a sent, not a formal vote from the other members of the board and how they are thinking about this issue?
You have pretty good with a number, I'd like to see some sort of language in the lease, you know, requiring them to minimize the number of cars and not park on public property overnight. But otherwise, I'm good with a number.
Yeah, so the, from a regulatory standpoint, I mean, like if we're a resident to park overnight in the public parking, is that something that can be ticketed, towed, addressed in some way automatically? Or would it require someone to go out there and make a complaint? I just want to make sure we talk through all of these aspects. Or is it the kind of thing that the town would entertain, you know, overnight leases or something?
If, my understanding is that the Board of Selectmen, that's a Board of Selectmen's purview if there are any changes. I think one of the points that was made by one of the board in the last day or two was very good in that the prospect of parking in the public lot as a, any sort of mitigation of this project is probably not appropriate, however, it is possible if the Board of Selectmen did at one point make a decision.
Certainly within their purview.
Right.
Not ours.
Right, I think, I think the biggest question comes down to our comfort level with, you know, seven one bedrooms and two studios, I think if that's a breakdown correctly. You know, is it sufficient parking and?
I think it is.
Yeah, just to comment, I also think it is, I think that everybody has rented apartments where you only get one parking space and then you figure it out. And I think.
Or even none.
As long as the private, I mean, as long as the public lot is signed as a public lot, I don't know what that is, but as long as it's clear what one is and what the other is, then I see no issue. And I'm looking at this as if, for the purposes of judging the amount of parking, the lower, you know, the, the public lot doesn't exist, you know, like if we're talking about the number of parking spaces, we're talking about the number on the private property, you know.
Absolutely.
And I agree with it because, you know, studios are studios.
What about you?
Or one bedroom, if any release that says you have one parking spot, then that's fine, you know.
Jim?
No, I have no problems with it, I think you've cut all the bases very, very well. The developer has done a good job, Lyndee's group has done an excellent job of putting this thing together. I have no problems with it whatsoever.
Yeah, I concur, I think this has arrived at a really good place.
Can I be reminded how the parking will be assigned, will the extra spaces be sold? Or how's that work?
So, Bill, this is Taylor Bearden again, customarily what we do and I'm speaking on behalf of the management company, which both Andrew Consigli and I are both involved in. But generally, we found that it's most effective to both reduce the number of unused parking spaces as well as to monetize the parking if we rent the parking for a nominal fee. So in cases where there is a tenant that does not have a car, we do not have a space allocated to them. So in this particular case, when we're dealing with a kind of sub-required parking arrangement where we don't have sufficient parking to meet the zoning code, what we could do, we haven't had to do this at any other project, but what we could do is we could simply include one space in the base rent to guarantee that no one was trying to save a little bit of money in order to park on street. But generally, I kind of let the, I guess I would say I let the market forces prevail in this case because generally that, that economic incentive or the disincentive, it makes it a relatively efficient situation and we deal in a lot of very parking constrained situations. Most of our management stuff is super tight inner-city multi and it works pretty well and we generally keep our lots at maximum usage.
Can you clarify what you're proposing? Are you proposing that they don't get it with the lease, but they have to pay X dollars a month?
So what I'm, I don't mean to be being ambiguous, I just generally, I wouldn't try to lock the parking program into the planning board decision and the reason I say that is because our residents and the general feedback is going to tell us what we need to do. So we have an approach to parking that we take, which is generally we charge anywhere from $25 to $50 a spot a month. And that varies by market. And that works pretty well because, like I said, it prevents us from having unused spaces allocated. So I would hesitate to say that my lease terms should be baked into the planning board decision just because I don't think that gives me any agility. If, if there's a specific concern that you think we need to address in terms of that language, I suppose we could try to build it in. But I, this is sort of a, it's a little bit fluid based on, on the market.
Andrew?
Yes.
Is this an appropriate time to make a motion to approve with waivers requested and a special permit?
I think we'll be there in just a moment, Jim, but I just had one question I wanted to ask. I was waiting to see if Bill had any follow-up from Taylor's response. One thing that you might want to do, you know, for your residents, just in case, and, and I don't want to try to dictate the lease terms, you know, overly, because I think the spaces will work out. But, you know, one thing they should notice that in, or they should be aware of is that in the winter, there will be no street, there's no overnight street parking. And if they, you know, even if they're trying to cruise by somehow, they could end up with a problem. Just, you know, just for your residents' benefit, they should know that.
That's a good point, so one of the things that management, I have a property management background and it's the, part of the biggest issue is obviously education of tenants about local ordinance, usually related to trash, noise and parking, those tend to be the biggest ticket items. And so we customarily have a resident handbook that covers items related to the actual building itself, meaning is there anything specific to energy efficiency, you know, low-flow showerheads, et cetera, things you need to be aware of, you know, how to modulate an air conditioner or not turn a mini split on or off, whatever the story may be. And that includes local ordinance for parking or, you know, on-street, off-street issues. So we'll make sure everyone is well aware and, you know, I'm generally assuming that with this new lot, there's also going to be signage probably that's going to tell the story of whatever regulation is assigned to that part of the street. I don't know off the top of my head if it's labeled right there on Bancroft Street, but if we're redoing the sidewalks, you know, it's a relatively easy thing to put whatever customary Maynard sign that says no parking between X and Y.
Right, okay. So I suppose one of the things we could do is bake into the conditions, you know, sort of a follow-on sign approval with Wayne and DPW.
Seems like a good idea, anyway. Just clarity, since everything's going to be new, I think we should strive for clarity on our placemaking as well.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion, Andrew.
Good. Okay, so, Bill, let me ask you, we're talking about a special permit, site plan and some waivers.
That's correct, what I would, yeah. Here's what I would suggest, Mr. Chair, if we, we might want to run through a couple of the conditions first, but then we're going to need really the board to take four actions. And what the, that would be a decision to grant the waivers as revised and presented, which are listed both on the updated staff report and as a separate attachment.
Yep.
On Board Docs. Secondly, then we have to make a determination if the request meets the criteria for special permit or, and I think that in that case, the applicant's provided excellent justification statement and it really just plugs in for all of that, that also is on Board Docs, how it meets the criteria. Then we need a vote on the special permit to allow multifamily dwelling in the general residence district. And then last, we would approve the site plan. And the big, the big caveats here are, for an approval would be, that I would recommend would be that there's an understanding that this approval is contingent upon the applicant obtaining variance from the ZBA. And the purpose of that is to allow an increased density to allow the 12 units because the lot as it's designed is reduced. And I think I should, I want to make it clear that, the two things about that. First of all, the applicant did respond to the town's RFP and that was one of the goals of this project, which was to preserve as much of the sledding hill as possible. And to make that occur, the applicant did reduce the potential footprint. It would have, the potential, if some of the footprint had been expanded, they could have met the size, the dimensional requirements, but at the sacrifice part of the amenity for that the town is receiving. So that's, I think that's really important to understand, that part. Secondly, the. Secondly, the, the approval will also be contingent upon the applicant successfully dedication, dedicating the three affordable units that, as they have proposed. And we would make that, that it has to be, go through the Affordable Housing Trust prior to CEO and that they would designate where they, the location would be, or however the Affordable Housing Trust feels is an appropriate way to regulate that. But the key part for the planning board's decision would be a minimum of three affordable units to be included.
Conditions to the special permit you're talking about.
That's right. That's right. And the, we've already discussed the developer is going to, they apply the snow, provide in perpetuity of snow plowing for the town's parking lot and seasonal landscapes or services west of the sledding hill. The other conditions that are the same that I sent you out that are drafts. I don't think anything's been added with the exception of, oh, the Affordable Housing Trust approving of the units prior to CEO. So if, if that's, if that's satisfactory to the board and, and will work as, as, we'll craft the conditions of approval based on the input from this meeting, we will review them with the, both the board and the applicants to make sure we have everything right. And if that is acceptable to the board, then I would recommend that we go through the actions required, which is waivers, determination if the request met the criteria for the special permit, approval of a special permit to allow the multifamily dwelling. And last, for the approval to site plan.
Right. All right. I am inclined to agree that with all those and say that we are prepared to move ahead. So do we need to close the, close the public hearing in order to move to deliberation and then to vote?
Correct. And, and, and because we have four though, we do require unanimous decision.
Right. Do we, we don't need a vote to close the public hearing? We just say we're closing the public hearing, right?
I think you do vote closing.
All right. I move that we close the public hearing on, sorry, 12 Bancroft Street, Coolidge School. Proceed to deliberation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, four ayes. Okay. So deliberation, do we need any further deliberation, any members of the board or are you prepared?
Is that condition list on board docs?
Yeah. If you look, you mean my draft condition list?
Yeah.
Yes, it said, if you can go on there, you see the staff report, it's in the back.
Do I bring it up on screen?
Yeah. I'll try to do that right now. Okay. All right, Ken, let's see. Can you see that? Recommendations are there? Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can zoom out a little.
Huh?
No.
Oh. Oh, geez. These are just the draft recommendations I had. They're basically what I sent you guys last week, but we, I can go through, you can scroll through them gently.
So where's that comment from Wayne about the water connections or something?
I just got, I haven't had a chance to put that in. I just, I already, you know, have to add that.
And the signage too.
Yeah. So Wayne, you would want that comment to read that, that prior to, you had, you'll work on me with it.
Yeah, absolutely. It, it's indicated in the, in our letter dated, just for reference, Bill, dated August 3rd.
Okay.
One of the highlighted, one of the highlighted comments in yellow talks about that. It's actually repeated three times.
That's good. And what was the other thing you just asked about, Andrew or Bill?
The signage.
Yeah.
It started with Wayne and DPW.
Work around the. Work with DPW about establishing parking and no parking restrictions along the section of Bancroft Street, you know, in the vicinity of site or something like that. I'd like to kind of look at parking throughout that, that area because I'm not really sure how it really works on the remainder of the street. So we should just evaluate all that.
Perfect. You got that, Bill?
Got it. Pretty much. And Wayne and I will work on the wording.
And you have the ZBA waiver in there too. Like I say, it's contingent on ZBA waiver.
I believe that's number one.
Number one, sorry.
Yeah.
I was writing instead of looking.
And yeah, so the, the, the ZBA granted one, granted this already. And they are going to be hearing this in August 24th.
Bill Cruncher, does that? Meet your needs?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the west of sledding hill thing, but.
Yeah, what is the west of sledding hill?
That's a good question. So I think, actually think Lindy might be best able to answer to this, but we should figure out mutually how we want to specify that a little more. Lindy, can you make a quick comment on that?
Oh, do we lose, is Lindy here still? Let's see.
Um, can you point to that verbiage? I think that.
Oh. You're talking about this one with the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it just like the strip by the sidewalk or something? I mean, is the park or what?
In between the two parking lots?
So that is intended that they will do snow plowing services for the parking lot essentially.
Yeah, I think the intent, if I remember that correctly, the intent was the parking lot and the grass around the parking lot, if you will.
Right. So that's the seasonal landscape services, just not letting it get all overgrown or what have you.
Correct.
Correct.
Sorry, a question I have for the board here is that when we look at the actual location of grasses, obviously snowplow services and, you know, maintenance of sidewalk frontage is a given. But should we specify specifically frontage on what street to the lot line, for example? I would kind of defer to how DPW wants to handle this because obviously they're the ones that maintain the park. So however, we can easily, easy, most easily communicate that to whomever will be doing park maintenance and just making a very clear boundary is probably the easiest for everyone.
I can, I can work with Bill if you want to change, you know, modify that. But my suggestion would be, you know, between the new parking lot, Elmwood Street and Bancroft Street. I mean, that area is something that we just didn't want DPW to have to basically deal with in addition to, you know, cutting and cutting the lawn for the entire, the entire park, if you will.
I think that makes sense. So essentially carrying the lot line all the way to Elmwood Street virtually and including that in our scope of landscaping services. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, it's clean.
Correct. And just to clarify the intent of three, where the property line is at the top of the sledding hill, the intent was for Civico to maintain from their west, so between there and Bancroft Street.
So Lindy, this is Bill Nebsor. Just, do I need to change the wording in that then, in your opinion? That's, I can.
Um, you could probably say west of the sledding hill lot line, I, that might help.
Why don't we say the easternmost lot line? So from the easternmost lot line to Bancroft Frontage.
That would be fine.
Eastern, okay.
Bancroft and Elm, and Elmwood Frontage, how's that?
Yeah, the easternmost lot line would be only Civico property, wouldn't include any town property.
Okay, so easternmost lot line to, what'd you said, to Bancroft?
Why not just all town property west of the sledding hill up to Bancroft and the other street?
I think that's, that's fine.
And to be honest, if we could define. We're all talking about the same dimension. We just need to get the right language, which can be finalized post, along with the signage and everything else, right? So.
I'm assuming it's just the landscape that's touching the town lot, right? On all sides.
Correct.
But can we also define seasonal?
Yes, so.
Four seasons, so.
Right. When, when Aaron McClosko was here, he came up with this wording. And what his intention was that the grass be mowed and that snow plowing and ice removal from any of the sidewalks there.
Why don't we just say that instead of seasonal landscape services? Why don't we say snow plowing, ice sidewalk, ice removal and, you know, mowing of grass and.
I think the intent, if I remember right, Aaron's intent with the word seasonal was really to indicate grass, leaves, stuff like that, so that the, you know, the park department didn't have to maintain yet another area.
Right, right. No, I, I, I hear you.
Correct.
A way that's less ambiguous or less subject to interpretation.
Sure, that's fine. I get it.
We'll work on it.
Hey, um, maybe this is to Wayne, but who's the, who's the accountant on the $100,000 allowance? Who determines cost?
Yeah, I, that's a good question. I don't know how it's been set up for us to meter that. I imagine that Civico will have to provide some type of accounting of that. And I would, to your point, Bill, I think, you know, DPW slash engineering would be appropriate to review that to make sure it makes sense.
So this is Taylor speaking. We have, I believe that's outlined in the purchase and sale agreement. Can someone affirm that if they know off the top of their head?
I'll pull it up. In the meantime, let's see.
Yeah, I just bring it up because we have another issue of that at another property. Be nice to define it better.
Yeah, I can speak on that. It's anything over $10,000 would need three bids. And then anything under that would, would not necessarily need bids, but, you know, obviously would show the amounts and billings to the town.
To Bill's point, it may be good to add somewhere the language that that accounting should just be reviewed by DPW as other departments may not be as detailed at understanding the numbers from, from a public bidding standpoint, that's all.
If we include language like that, I think we need to understand what, so say, you know, there was a DPW that had a problem with some of the figures, what's the next step? If we're going to include the review, we need to understand what happens next.
That's a good point, Andrew. And my, the only comment I'll make based on previous conversations we've had is that we wanted to make it very specific that we're not, we're not doing the work on the public property separately. The same construction supervisor, which is Sustainable Comfort, it's under their scope. So the, basically, we as the developer are hiring a third party to do this. And so the third party is going to provide us information about their bid. This is a design-build process. And we will review the backup and then we will approve whatever vendor or, you know, scope of work, et cetera. So there's a little bit of, I don't want to hold up the entirety of the process because of a disagreement about some of the accounting. Somehow we have to just keep that in mind when we, when we talk this through. I don't know how to solve it specifically, but we're not doing this separately from the rest of the project. So, you know, if someone quotes the sidewalk, they're going to quote the sidewalk. And then we're going to have to have them specifically break out the parts that need to be accounted for separately.
Okay, can everybody see this?
We're still on the draft.
Okay, let me see, let me get this. I've got the specifics here. I can. Let's see.
Bill, you might have to stop your screen share and then start it again and choose which window you want us to see.
All right. Me controls. Well.
We're doing interpretive dance, Taylor's ready for us.
Well, no. All right, bear with me a minute, folks. Let's see, I am.
Bill, do you think Taylor could apply for an assistant planning technician to maybe help going forward?
It could be, it could be. Um, okay, wait a minute.
And we're in a self-dealing situation now. This is a problem.
Uh, all right. I just made a complete mess. Um. Let's see. Taylor, I lost my whole dashboard. If you have any idea, let me, I.
Let me see if I can, and back you up here. Don't rely on me, but let me see if I can pull up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure, I've lost my whole. We've had some problems today on top of it and I'm probably not the best pilot.
Bill, if it's something you've saved to the network, I can, you can give me the ability to screen share.
Well, I can't, that, yeah, it is. It's right on the PNS statement. Exhibit D of the, the PNS statement goes over all the public improvements and the $100,000. I have it there, but now, um, let's see if I can figure this. Okay.
I've got it, Bill, if you want me to pull it up right now.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thanks a bit much.
All right. So what we're looking at right here is, it does say draft behind it. But this, I believe, was not changed from the final. So the. Okay, it does look like it has changed a little bit, but I recall this number right here being $10,000, but this is the structure of the language.
You don't.
Right down here.
Yeah.
I still see the draft recommendation.
I don't see Taylor's screen.
Oh, now I see Gray. There we go.
There we go.
Oh, no. Now it's the Brady Bunch.
All right. So are you all ready again? I can try one more time. Okay, here we go. Please confirm.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, so this is the executed version. While I lost you guys, I found the right one. So everything here is as we are governed by the purchase and sale agreement. Tell me when you want me to scroll down past item nine.
So is this like what you, what you anticipate being able to fund or is this like a wish list from first priority to last priority?
Wish list from first to last priority. So when this effort was started, there was.
We, it is our duty as school committee.
Oh, sorry, that's not school. I realize we're not school committee. I don't know if anyone else heard that. So the, this is definitely a wish list. We don't have our bids in, so we don't know the extent. I tried in advance of this meeting to identify roughly the cost of the parking lot itself. But the, the parking lot was top priority and everything else cascaded after that. And I really don't have a way of knowing at the moment whether or not we're going to make it down to item one or item nine.
So, Andrew, this, this, um, exhibit is just a list of projects. So I think I just want a condition that the materials and and cost for that stuff be approved by DPW superintendent.
Yeah, I think I have, I think I, I'll just put, I, I didn't put cost, so number four here, Bill, I gotta just put end costs.
Yeah, but that just says how they're bidding it. I mean, I, I, and we need to sign off on DPW that the stuff was built with quality stuff that he likes and that, you know, the accounting of 100,000 is okay with him.
So I did see the, the note in, whatever that was, that says that, you know, you have to work with DPW to make sure that all the benches and every, all this stuff is up to what DPW wants going forward. Um, I wonder if there's a way to work in. I don't know, I mean.
No, I'd sign off on the, the budget, sign off the costs, the accounting.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's no, I don't know, there's no CO until DPW signs off on the, I don't know, what is it, Exhibit D?
I mean, most of, most of this cost, right, is going to be the parking lot and the sidewalks?
Most likely, yeah. The parking lot retaining, parking lot retaining wall as kind of one item because they're obviously not living without each other. Um, that's going to be our biggest chunk, and I'm a little worried that it's going to be larger than we think. Um, but I will furnish, I mean, all interested parties, particularly OMS, will get that information as we have it because it's kind of critical to the expectations to move forward. But for purposes of the planning board, obviously, we wanted, you know, we wanted to make sure that all the items were listed in case we had ample money.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
And, and so that, that, that makes me think, you know, well, this, that's in the PNS, right? So there's limited things we can do about that, but, you know, if you, if you guys come back and say, oh, well, we can just do the parking lot, and DPW says, well, we could do the parking lot plus all this stuff for the 100. Is there some way to have a fallback like that, where, you know, we take the cash if, uh, your guys can't do it and our guys think they can?
The only issue that I seem to remember about that, and I'll defer to someone more versed in the politics, uh, and the laws. Um, but there's an procurement, public procurement issue that arises based on who does the work. And probably Wayne is best equipped to comment on that, but I think we were kind of toeing a line.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I doubt DPW would be able to do it cheaper than Civico would.
Appreciate the vote of confidence, Wayne.
I'm not judging or anything. I'm just kind of playing through the scenarios, thinking it through.
So, I mean, the bottom line, if it comes down to it, they're gonna, you know, um, Taylor and his group's gonna come up with a matrix of different items, and I'm gonna look at it, Justin and I are gonna look at it, and if something's, if the contractor says, oh, yeah, you know, we're gonna provide, you know, this section of curbing and it's, it's gonna cost $99,000, well, clearly that's not gonna fly, and I'm gonna push back and say, we don't agree with these numbers, let's get together and talk it through, but these numbers are unreasonable. So I think that that's, that's probably the best we're gonna be able to do is us critiquing it and saying these numbers seem reasonable and in line with, um, industry and mass DOT standards. Is probably the best we're gonna be able to do.
That's, I think that is reasonable. Uh, but shall we, so Bill, you, uh, Crenshaw, you suggested, you know, no CO until such time?
Yeah, as, um,
By that sign.
DPW signs off on the, um, on the, uh,
Costing.
Of the Exhibit D items that were constructed.
Right.
Because actually, you know, I think it would kind of actually protect Civico because, you know, they might just get only the one or two things on the list and you know, everybody's saying, well, where's my recycling trash bins? And DPW says, hey, 100,000's gone. So it just protects everyone.
And the DPW agrees.
Yes, this is Lyndy Gier and, um, the Chair of the Coolidge Group. Um, Bill Crenshaw is exactly right. There was a change in the scope on this project in the, um, transfer from Aaron McClosko over to Justin. And so, uh, a lot of the completes traits with the curbing and things like that were not part of the original scope of the project. So you're going to see, because we as a town are now requiring that, that a lot of the nice playground stuff that we thought would happen will not happen because it's getting eaten up by these additional requirements. Cost-wise.
Well, let's be clear, all the public stuff along the frontage of Civico property is not in this item D.
Uh, correct, but I'm just saying that there was a very different interpretation by Aaron, who had originally been on the team, and then when he left, um, you know, we each have different interpretations, so think of this list as wish list, and it will be up to, um, Justin and Wayne to decide what the priorities are, along with Civico. They're prioritized there in, in the list already, but I doubt that we'll be able to get through all of the things on that list.
Well, as long as we have oversight, I think then we'll be happy.
Yeah, so Andrew, can we just figure out a condition that gives BPW the final okay on.
So, you know, I think it's.
Exhibit D.
You know, deferring, I mean, the language should be something along the lines of, you know, like, uh, no certificate occupancy shall be issued until such time that DPW has signed off on the reasonability of costing for the, uh, built elements of Exhibit Eight? Is that right?
I think it's Exhibit D.
D, sorry.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Did you get that, Bill? Well, you can go back and listen to the recording. Does that, uh, make sense to the rest of the board?
Okay with me.
Yep.
All right, so I have no more comments on my conditions.
Nor do I. Anyone else?
Most of it.
All right, then I'm going to, well, I will call for a motion to, uh, or maybe I'll just make the motions and make it easier. Enough, uh, parliamentary town foolery. Um, so I will make a motion that we grant the waivers as described in Exhibit A.
I'll second.
All those in favor? And we'll go, I guess we'll do it individually because we need to be unanimous, and so.
Aye.
That was Jim, aye, Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Aye.
And this is Andrew, aye. Now that passes unanimously, grant the waivers. Uh, next, uh, move that we, uh, determine if the request meets the criteria for a special permit as described in Section 10.4 of the ZBL.
I'd make a motion.
Yeah.
I second.
So that was Jim and Natalie seconding. All those in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye. Unanimous on question number two, uh, criteria for special permit. Uh, number three, decision on special permit, so I could, I move that we approve the special permit to allow multifamily dwelling in the general residence district.
I'll check at that.
Described during this meeting and amended during this meeting.
Hmm.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye. And lastly, I move that we, uh, approve the site plan for the redevelopment of the property located at 12 Bancroft Street per the site plan dated April 30th, 2020, with modifications as agreed by the town engineer and applicant.
So move.
Second. All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye, unanimous.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Congrats, guys. Good luck.
All right, uh, here's my agenda.
I have a question for Bill.
Which Bill?
Bill Namsom.
That's me, yes.
Bill, uh, items number, uh, uh, four through eight have a date of May 18th, 2020, is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, one more time, Jim?
On items four through eight, you say approval of the town meeting of May 18th, 2020.
It's gonna be.
Is that correct?
Oh, for the minutes?
No, on the agenda tonight. Items four through eight.
Should be October 5th, you're right, Jim.
Ah, yes, okay. Let's see.
So we'll automatically, uh, think that, uh, four through eight will have, uh, the new date?
Yes, let me just pull up.
When we, uh, vote to recommend, we can certainly, uh, make sure to state that.
Okay, that's good.
So it's October 5th, right?
That's correct. Um, oh, I see, yeah, I haven't looked, uh, yes, absolutely. Town meeting, the town meeting of, um, October 5th. These, and, um, right, and, uh, Katie, uh, are you on? Do you want to explain this? Or does, if the board has any questions, or I'll be happy to do it.
Whatever the board wants.
Okay. Let's, let me just, uh, poll the members of the board. Does anyone have any issues with any of these recommended zoning bylaw changes?
Yeah, I got questions about the, uh, intended item four, the open space rezon. The other ones I'm okay with.
Okay, uh, what are, what are some of the questions?
Um, the kind of use that's currently there really isn't the primary purpose of our open space zoning. And if I look at the open space zoning section of the zoning bylaws, the, the current use requires a special permit. So.
It's an existing condition.
Yeah, but it's existing condition under a different zoning. But under, under open space, parks require a special permit. So I'm just kind of wondering, why are we bothering?
The original intent was certainly to maintain it in perpetuity as open space. Uh, I believe it's currently zoned general residential. And therefore could be risk.
This is Lyndy Gier. That is correct. Um, when the Coolidge team was working on this, the town had suggested that, um, a good idea would be to rezone this as open space so that it would be left in perpetuity. This is one of the most congested areas of Maynard. And if the park was not there, there would be no place for families and children to enjoy open space. Because the backyards are so small.
And as a resident of the presidential, so I agree. It needs.
Yeah, I agree too, but I don't see any, I, I don't see any threat of that going away, but my question technical is that park use in open space requires a special permit. So, does that need to happen before or after it gets rezoned?
May I add one more thing? Um, this is not, um, technically a park. It, uh, we call it a park, but it is not zoned as a park. It, Andrew's correct, it is general residential right now, and that is the danger.
That's correct, but the use is as a park. In, a park use in open space zoning districts requires a special permit. So my question stands, do we need to give it the special permit before or after it gets rezoned?
Well, we could, if, if, um, to me, it's like, you know, it's a pre-existing condition. If you rezone, you know, you don't have to re-permit everything that's in the, in that zone that's granted, you know, that, that is already existing.
That makes sense to me, but is that true?
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one on TV, but that seems reasonable. I mean, I can't believe that you would have to do that, and you know, when you think about places that do more wide-scale rezoning. I don't know.
We have time, and the, the, the easiest way to, I think, to address this would be, say, um, just make the recommendation contingent upon approval of a, uh, special permit if required after, you know, we could check it out.
Yeah, sure.
And I mean, all, all happens, I do an advertisement, we have a hearing if we need to. We could, we could, we could get it through before, um, the town meeting.
So I'm sure we could do it in one, who, who is the applicant? Who filed? I mean, it's.
Town.
Question.
It's town.
Okay, so we can condition it.
If, if necessary, yeah.
Would that, uh, satisfy your, uh, concern, Bill?
Hmm, I'm not thrilled about conditioning zoning bylaw articles that we have to bring back to board of selectmen. Can we just get counsel to tell us if, uh,
All right.
His grandfather?
There's no.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, you know, I could shoot a note to counsel and ask their opinion on this matter, and, you know, we can continue that one to the next meeting. That one article.
I think that they will have knowledge about rezoning things and what happens to the existing whatever's in place afterward, so.
There's no urgent, you know, this is October, we have plenty of time, right? So.
Um, no, we don't, because the warrant closes at the end of this calendar month. Warrant closes in
Right, in 20 days.
Two weeks, maybe.
But we do have, uh, that's true, but, um, planning board hearings can be completed with, um, they can go after. So that would be, um, that wouldn't be the issue, I don't think, Bill.
I think that if we can get something from.
Get an opinion quickly, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we'll get one.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue.
And then we'll just clear this up in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Are, are we meeting before the warrant closes?
24th? Is that, is that, now am I thinking of something else?
Um, let me check that.
25th.
Am I thinking of something else?
20, it might be the 25th.
I believe so.
I think that sounds right to me.
Yeah, it'll be the 25th.
We can, you know, this wants to be cut in, but it's a really harsh point, so how do we, on, on an ongoing basis?
Andrew, the next video is the 25th.
Right, okay.
Well, I think we have time, don't we?
Yeah.
Let's run.
We're gonna get an opinion on it quickly, and then we can act on it on the 25th.
Hey, Bill, Crenshaw?
Yeah.
Bill, do you have, uh, just so I can, uh, get a jump on it, where, where you're looking at the open space, um, as the open space district is where you're seeing that?
Yeah, 95, 953, subsection two, special permit for parks.
Okay.
Um, warrant closes on the 21st.
On the 21st?
Yeah. I mean, the selectmen do.
So I think if we had any, if we have had anything like that where we, there's existing use, the, the zoning of the property was changed, and I, I would imagine that that is illegally created, uh, it's legally created, so why would it be different than if you had a, um, if we had, uh, a new zoning district for residential units created, and we required a larger lot minimum? a new zoning district for residential units created, and we required a larger lot minimum than three quarters of the houses had, would they all have to go get variances? I don't, is it any different than that? So, in other words, like, when we dropped the S1 district and S2 district on parts of Powder Mill Road, all those neighborhoods are still undersized lots. And I, I, I'm certain they didn't all go, you know, get a variance to have that. I would think that that's probably as good a precedent to draw from, but I'd certainly be double, a double check with legal. But I don't see there'd be any difference, would there?
I mean, would, in that case, wouldn't it be that if, so technically, it's not a park now, right? But if any changes were made to it going forward under the new zoning, then, I don't know.
Right, no.
If it is a park, the current land use is a park. It may not, it may be in a different zoning district, but the current land use is a park.
Right, and, but to Bill's point, like, the current lot size was X, and then they expanded the minimum beyond that. Did that person have to go to ZBA to get approval for their existing house?
Andrew, excuse me just for a minute, but if we voted tonight to approval to the town meeting, and then after we discuss it and get the legal counsel, we can always withdraw it.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, so let's just have it as an intended item on the next meeting to confirm.
Yeah, I'll get it clarified, and-
Confirm or? Okay.
Andrew, how do we act on these?
Well, we have to refresh my memory, Bill. We vote to recommend.
Yeah, you, would you vote to recommend to the town meeting of, yeah.
And we need to do each individually, correct?
Oh, yes, 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 they're each, their own thing, their own.
I know, but I'm always hoping we can club it together. It's October 5th, okay, so does anyone else have any issues with any of the other amendments to the ZBL? Hearing none, I'm going to proceed to make some motions. So I move that the board recommend approval to the town meeting of October 5th, 2020. Changes to the zoning bylaws amending the zoning map of Maynard by changing the zoning designation from general residence to an open space zoning district for the property located at Coolidge School, 12 Bancroft Street. Assessors map 20 parcel 234.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye. Passes unanimously. All right, I move that we recommend approval to the town meeting of October 5th, 2020. Changes to the zoning bylaws amending section 11 definitions by adding a definition for for-profit educational institution.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye. Passes unanimously. All right, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the town meeting of October 5th, 2020. Proposed changes to the zoning bylaws amending the water supply protection district map dated March 2017.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, yes. Passes unanimously.
Andrew, did you, did you forget number six?
Oh, did I skip it? I apologize. Sorry, small print, wrong glasses. Move on that one then. I would like to move that we recommend approval to the town meeting of October 5th, 2020. Changes to the zoning bylaws amending section 9.4.10 parking by changing the section number from 9.4.10 to 9.4.9.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Andrew, aye. Unanimous. And Keene Road, we're gonna pass off to next week. We don't give you anything about, Bill, right?
Right.
Now, oh, let's do the minutes, as long as we-
Oh yeah.
So, the minutes of 7:14:20. Any comments, amendments?
Yeah, I think there's a reference to John Dwyer being head of Conscom, should be head of CPC.
On 7:14, Bill?
I think so. Just search for his name.
Speaking of CPC too, we need to, before we do the town planner update, we'll talk about that, because we need to get a representative.
Yeah, we can't adjourn until we get somebody, Natalie.
Yeah, right. I was thinking the same thing.
So, oh, John Dwyer's head of, oh, I see, okay, yeah, of, okay, of, he's not head of Conscom, right, CPC. Sure, okay, I'll make that change right now. Okay, so do we vote on 14th with that change on the July 14th?
Vote on-
Yeah, I'll do a motion to approve July 14 minutes as amended.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Yeah, I was, yes.
Just sultry aye for Mr. Crenshaw.
And then we have on the 28th.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see on the agenda. Any comments on the 28th? Hearing none, I'll move to approve the minutes of 7:28:20.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep, yep, yep.
Unanimous. Our CPC representative? We need to designate a new CPC representative for the planning board? I think you'd be exceptional in this role, Natalie.
I'm not even a, you know, true board member, but, you know.
Oh no, you're a true member.
Oh, no, 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 you're the heart and soul.
Let's see, Bill's-
What do you think, do you have interest? I mean, I don't mean, I'm not trying to steamroll you, I'm just saying, would you be interested?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You know, Natalie, I think you would be an ideal person for that. You, you understand the issues very, very well.
Okay.
Awesome.
I will, can I then nominate Natalie for the position on CPC?
Second.
Is this a, do we, I think-
I don't think we actually have to vote, but-
We've been doing one year, is it one-year terms we do?
I think so, yes.
Well, it will be taking over Jim's term, whatever it is.
Actually, my term ended at the end of June, so it will be a new term.
Oh, well, don't tell her, it's probably a three-year term. It's whatever the term is, I mean, we don't have a choice. The term is the term.
Term as an alternate whatever isn't even, I don't know, anyway, sure.
It'll be fine.
Yes.
They're not gonna stop you from leaving if you want to.
So I've heard, it'll be fine.
I mean, I assume selectmen still have to appoint her, we're just recommending.
Do they? They, they appoint our rep, Bill?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean officially.
We, we suggest and then they nominate.
Oh, okay.
They have the holy oil.
Right, yeah.
For the anointing.
Lighting on the lover fingers and stuff.
And, let's see, Bill, you're, you're still on CPC, right, Bill?
Correct, yeah, I'm housing, housing's rep.
Okay.
All right, good.
Is CPC really two meetings a month, just to clarify?
Yeah, although we've been averaging one meeting every six months lately, so.
Oh, it hasn't been that bad, Bill, come on.
Just, just, just checking, because two meetings a month is not something I can fully commit to.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid that.
I'm, I'm all for meeting when, yeah, it sounds good, but just-
So aren't the majority of the members, so, yeah, we're gonna have to work on that frequency.
Good, well, thank you Natalie.
Thank you, Andrew, thanks.
You wanna revisit that in about six months, Natalie, huh?
Yeah.
All right, so I think the only thing left, planners update.
So, we have a couple of things. I need to get, remind you guys, our next meeting, now we've got a couple of odds and ends coming in. Some A and Rs next meeting and stuff, but one of the things we did punt was our rules and regulations. We kinda got sidetracked on them with the COVID. I got, the last input I got was from Bill and from, I think, Chris or somebody. If anybody else has any input, we'll try to put it in, and I'll send out the latest draft. One of the things I would like to put in, because we have, we have to revisit our fees periodically. And I think Joanna has been going through the fees, I think, or, I might not be correct, but, but we have an update on fees for application, but we're, right now, because we're, our budget is considerably tightening up. We're trying to look where we are, where the town is not covering their own costs for these sort of applications, and one of the places we found were things like envelopes for mailings and this, this sort of what seems like a little expense, when we're looking at it, because right now we're trying to cut everything, it's not. So, one thing I would like to add, and you'll see it when we bring them for review, is gonna be adjustment that kinda looks like nickel and diamond stuff, but it's not. So, for example, when we do a mailing, you know, you get 100 mailings. The applicant reimburses us for the postage, but we're buying the envelopes. And so, like, things like that, so we're really trying to look for that. So, it's not the most exciting sounding, but it's something that we need to make sure we cover our costs at least in this. Also-
Bill, excuse me, but couldn't we change that to say all-inclusive costs?
Yes, we, we'll, we'll research how the best-
Plus 10%?
Yeah, oh, a courtesy fee, right, you know, we're not Ticketmaster, it's, but, yeah, that's, so that's something that we really are are trying to be cognizant of, is covering our expenses. And we also wanna clarify some of the procedures that we're doing with everything from intake to peer review, and I think it's, everything, nothing's changed since we saw it last, but everybody might have forgotten it, so. And I'll circulate it around. Natalie, I know, did I send you the draft?
No, you talked about it, but I don't think you sent it to me.
Okay. No, I meant before, before, when you were just coming on, I can't remember if I did or not, if you had it, but I'll get it to you.
Hey, Bill, the other thing I think we were planning on asking was about the certified return receipt mailings?
Oh, right, 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 yes, yes. How, well, you can ask it, Katie, you're here.
Yeah, so, basically, we're questioning whether or not the board would want to continue sending a butter notifications, certified return receipt, or just sending them regular mail. We're not required by law to return them, or to send them return receipt. But that's what we've been doing, and we were, we figured we'd ask you guys what your opinion on the matter is.
That's the only way to approve that butter was notified, right?
Right, otherwise you could-
Yeah, we checked around and-
Is this a cost-saving thing to us, or is this just a?
Well, the, the cost, yeah, for us, I think the idea is that it takes a lot of time from the staff to do them. If, not, not if it's a small mailing, but Joanna's on, Joanna, you could probably speak to that better on that.
Oh, here she comes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, Joanna.
Yeah, I think it, if there is a cost, it's $7.60 per envelope. Then when we do a decision, it's 50 cents, 55 cents to re-mail it again, and we have an employee sitting for two to three hours, you know, putting together the certified mailings. So it is a cost to the applicant as well as us. There's communities, I reached out to the town of Ludenburg today, and they, they have the applicant bring in the self-addressed envelopes, and then we just put the material in them, the two sets, so there are different avenues we can go to, but they don't do certified mailing anymore due to the cost and the time with that.
So we just wanted to, yeah, we didn't want to do anything without seeing what the boards, take your temperature on it, see what you think.
My two thoughts are, one, can we, like, stipulate bright hot pink envelopes or something? I don't know. Not really, but you know what I mean, as someone who recently received one of these, you know, you know, they, I think it's important to make sure that the butters are made aware of things, but I don't. Also, like, aren't we all registered to USPS? It's like, I don't know.
They would still be notified, we would still do mailings, they just would not be the certified with the green card.
Right.
Right, we would still have to send the, the same letter and have proof via the butters list of who we sent the letters to. We just wouldn't be doing the green receipts.
Right.
You know, the question really is, like, what's the liability side, and, you know, what's the history of anyone ever getting in, having a problem with this?
Oh, wow, that's a great question. I mean, historically, like, if you read up on, on, you know, Massachusetts land law, they have these examples of notifications, and there's, the court will wrestle with the decision of whether it was reasonable or not. But for us, I, I did have, it's happened twice where I had to go back and and somebody's saying, I didn't get it, and I went back. But I, again, I, I don't think we would really be that, we would really have that much of an opinion one way or the other if it wasn't for the, for the-
Bill, why, why couldn't we ask town council for an opinion?
Oh, we did, I did. On town council, they said whatever you do, it should be memorialized and consistent, so-
What does that mean?
In other words, we should-
Do anything you want, as long as it's always the same thing.
Yeah, in other words, adopt it.
And in the regulations.
Yeah, we would adopt it and then say that everybody is a certified male, or they're not a certified male.
I, I understand that it, like, costs a lot, and it costs a lot of time. I just think about when, you know, the town sent out new trash guidelines and nobody read them, because nobody, I don't know, you know, I just, I wanna make-
It carries a different weight when you receive that.
No question.
I don't know if there's just a way to, I don't know.
Well, you know what? This is not something we need to make a decision on this very moment.
No, 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 no. It's really-
So we have to, we're addressing in the, the course of the upcoming rules and regulations revisit, so.
I mean, I, I would like to throw in something I always wanted to do, which we tied this in. I think it'd be fine if we save the applicant's money and save staff time, but I've always been interested when I traveled other states, and, you know, they post a sign on the property saying, planning board hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever. So if we combine the two, and we have a sign on the properties that have planning board, and then we, you know- And we have a sign on the properties that have planning board and then we, you know, don't have the big green signature letters or whatever the hell they are.
Yes, I, I do that and I heard about that practice from Jimmy McDonald only a few weeks ago, so he is also a big fan of that, so.
Yeah, I, I, I did work with that and, and it's, uh, the, the, as long as you, you know, you have to put in, well, if you do it, that the, in your, um, decision, the applicant should remove all the signs because we'd be, we'd, we'd put them all over, they'd, you'd find them in the sewers and.
Yes.
But, you can, I'll check into it, we don't have to make a decision on that tonight, I could check it.
Well, let's get some feedback, because if it's, you know, something that is bright and, you know, forces everyone to take notice, then.
I do like the idea of.
More efficient way of doing it.
Carrying a regular mailing, maybe with a. Clear return address or a stamp or something, I don't know, you know, like, um. Whatever, but yeah, the sign too, I don't think, I think that that's a good idea to look into for sure.
Very good. Cool.
And my only other thought is to simplify things, like we have, you know, you gotta do a traffic study, you gotta do a landscape plan or whatever. And if we could like, you know, set a minimum size project that they have to think about that. Instead of, you know, requesting waivers, that would be useful.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not as worried about saving the applicant's time. I would, we have way more problems with not having the materials than with having the materials, so I'm not sure what we're trying to solve.
Well, I'm just thinking, yeah, saving the duplex guy a bunch of headaches, you know? Try making it harder for him.
I don't want to either, but the, the. I'm also just sick to death of, we never have full sets of materials, we never have stuff on time, so I'm uninclined to loosen the standards. But that's just me.
Wow, sounds like it's gonna be a good, uh, meeting.
Hey, Bill, I'm not sure if you realize that we're all watching you write this email.
Oh, okay, I was putting Jim's in.
Assuming that's what you're doing.
That's exactly it, I'm writing Jim Coleman's remark about the, the.
All right. Is that the extent of the planners update, Bill?
Well, uh, yes, it's, it's everything that's, um.
Perfection.
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't, I, I think anything else is good, but.
All right. That being said, unless anyone has, uh, any, uh, cause to object, I'm gonna move that we adjourn this, uh, meeting of the Maynard Planning Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
I have a night.
Yeah.